We don't have to.
I'll have to bring it up. We're gonna get this thing.
Okay.
All right, where is William? A meeting called to order.
Okay.
Four twenty-one.
Okay.
All right. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, is there a flag?
Yeah, I think, no, I think.
Virtual flag.
Virtual flag.
We'll use the board up there.
We'll envision it in our.
Exactly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so I think we had this posted as, as working on the work session agenda and then the next one too, right?
Yes, and whatever other agendas come up as what is.
Okay, all right. So let's start with the draft agenda of the work session, April twenty-sixth and seventh. So we need to have an executive session and it needs to be on Friday morning because we are going to have the board meet our possible attorney for the contract negotiations. It needs to be an executive session because we may receive new advice. So. Remind me of the, we didn't cover several things.
I put that for the mazes.
You did already?
Yes.
Okay, so that's just.
Right, that's not for this one.
Well, let's look at this. I was thinking maybe to take away the networking, eight to eight-thirty or start earlier? Yeah, that would be fine.
Can you represent that end of the executive session?
Yeah. I'm gonna, I think thirty minutes would be adequate, but knowing board members, they might want to go longer than that.
Do this, I've got, you've given me three hours. I can, I'll squeeze a Friday.
Where are you?
I'm at eight-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Okay.
So I will squeeze my time. If you go, if you go more than thirty minutes, take it out of the way.
Okay.
So we're starting.
And how about tomorrow, I'll check with the attorney and see if they feel thirty minutes is adequate and we can adjust even ahead of time if we think they're gonna need more time.
Okay, so, so let me understand, so I'm gonna start executive session at eight?
Eight.
Eight-thirty?
And we're gonna need the possible action coming out of executive session.
John?
I'm sorry, my brain was over alcohol. What was the reason pre-executive session?
So the board members can meet the attorney that we are considering to do the superintendent conference.
Okay. Okay. All right. And we're not gonna do any of those other things, 'cause that was, yeah, regular time.
That's, that's at a regular board meeting.
Imprecation would be.
Oh, yeah, imprecation is going off.
Yeah.
Please remove that.
We're.
That's, yeah, okay. We can have a moment of silence, let's just have that, or, um, do we, let's do a moment of silence, just have it there if we need it, we can use it, and if we don't, we're okay. All right. All right, so now the community project review capital list is what we could shorten if we need to.
Yes.
Okay, make sure.
Tanya has given me for words as referendum cost estimate funding.
Yeah.
She's asked me to make that PE two-point-D debt management and referendum funding.
PE what's, I'm sorry.
It'll be two-point-D, it's the debt management.
Okay.
So she's asking me to put that along with referendum funding.
Okay.
So she asked me to take the cost estimate, if that's okay, Dr. Burr.
Yes, yes, sure, sure.
So it should be just referendum funding?
It should be PE, two-point-D debt management and referendum funding. And then that's what they're gonna talk about.
Okay.
Something like that. And it's the same time frame.
Okay. All right. We're now to the press lunch, half an hour. All right, and then Lynn Stokes Murray, only she's coming, not the other lady?
Oh, no, I don't know. Do you want me to?
Yeah, I, you know what, I can, I have their business cards, but not with me. So do you know who the other lady's name, and I can't remember her name. If you say your name, I'll say yes or no.
The person, I don't know it right off the hand.
Yeah.
That she brought with the meeting.
Yeah.
But I can ask her if both of them are coming.
Yeah, those are, those on the agenda. All right, the leader in need program, and that's gonna be from two to two-thirty. So this is a presentation of costs.
I came back up, this, this referendum ca, yeah, costs, basically, uh, what are we doing, what are we doing with this information? What, what are we? What is expected to come out of that?
Informationally, no action. And if I can summarize, and however, this is what she's gonna say, for every billion dollars that you ask for, it's gonna cost, and I don't know what the amount is, but it's gonna be on the order of three dollars. And so when you set the dollar amount, you can multiply to figure out. Is that right? Yes, that is right. So if you set the thing at some number, two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, you multiply it by the, no, that is, that's not right. Because, because four-hundred million costs six dollars.
On a tax bill?
On a, yeah, the tax, the bottom line is, you figure out the, what you want, and when you tax the average house, the average house costs so much dollars a month.
And that's what she's gonna explain.
And that's what she's gonna talk about, yeah.
Is that into your question, or?
But you, you won't, you won't decide the funding cost until you decide what the total request is going to be. And then it's an easy multiplication to get to.
Right, well, yeah, that's one of those, there's actually gonna come out of that.
Okay. So going back to the leader in need program, what is that gonna be, Dr. Burr?
I've been gone eight days and I don't remember where you put it.
Carmen, Carmen Dylan is making the present, Carmen and the kid, and I think this, it has something to do with what we're talking about, the cost or what the program.
I, I, yes, I think that people were, the community brought up the cost of the program, and if we had any evidence, it had any impact on academic achievement.
And I also remember that some board member says, hey, I stay looking at that program, just looking at that one program, let's look at all programs. I, I, I remember there should be more than need, 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 on this, on this outline. Because I say, because this is not, it was not right to look at and call out one program, but we should have put all the programs that we have in the district.
Well, and I think for that, for, so we're starting the leader in need program, because, but I don't, I think that you make a valid point, and that's important, but we have to start somewhere, so maybe that's the.
But it should be two, not just one. It should be two programs, not one set at a time. Because when you start with one, we might wanna be careful, because you just, you did this program with kids to, to one, one group of, of people in this district. So when we start talking about, pointing out about that one program, where are we going with it? How do we earmark that?
Well, I don't think we know yet.
That's fine, but I just.
So I think it's really important that we have a cost analysis in, okay, of the program, school by school, and where those funds come from.
I think that's what's.
I think that's what was.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. So what other, so what other programs, William, are you thinking specifically?
I, I don't, I don't remember right off the top of my head, I was only, I didn't, I didn't jot any of that, any of that stuff down, but I mean, even start with the, actually, I'm not even, I'm not going to, I mean, that's, that's.
Well, I know we've talked about the technology that we need information on, and that's on here someplace, I thought.
And that's being taken off.
Oh, it's been taken off?
Because you're doing it at the academics, and Tanya asked for it to be called, it's the board signature authority. Does the technology audit, you were doing it at academic tomorrow?
Is that on our agenda for tomorrow? I know we're doing the, okay. Oh, we are, yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right. Next one, two-thirty to three-thirty, the.
John?
To, to Will's point, I think Saturday, Saturday morning, when Tanya gets the budget update, and she hits the instruction section.
Right.
That's when it's open season on programs. I, I expect to ask Bonnie Olman some questions about programs, have they been vetted? Because Tanya can't judge whether an academic program is, is the right one, so I think, but it's part of a budget, so I think they have to tag team each other. And I'm with you, I'm on it, I don't know which programs to ask about, except for all of them.
Okay. Update on the weapons search for right choices and the, update on the CSRO for the, SCRO for the elementary schools.
So Wendy told me to ask, do you all, that still needed to be on the agenda based on the information that went around? Sounds like you all had a conversation some other time, and she said those two things should be coming off the agenda?
What was that on?
Wendy asked if the update on weapons search for right choices and the update on SCRO for elementary schools needed to continue to be on the agenda based off of information she had emailed to the whole full board.
No, I think that, that needs to stay on the agenda.
She has sent, she said, she has sent you all information to the full board.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, I think they both need to stay on the agenda. This needs to be the full board discussion.
Forward it to an automated voice messaging system.
She's in that meeting.
Eight, zero, three, two, four, zero, eight, one, four, seven. Is not available.
I don't remember specifically what.
At the tone, please record your address. When you finish recording, you may hang up.
Yes, I, I think, I think they both should stay on the.
Wendy, this is her, I'm in a planning meeting, there's two items on the agenda for Friday afternoon, update on weapon, at the work session on Friday, work session on weapons at right choices, and update on SCRO for elementary schools. When you get out of that meeting, see this message, call me back, we'll stop for you. Thanks. One of the issues of right choice, and this has been two weeks ago or so, it was the issue of wanding those kids.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what we decided to do, either not gonna, we're gonna do it or not do it, I, you remember?
To be honest with you, the last time, the last thing I remember, remember was, was that someone was supposed to have been sending, sending this, sending out some information or something like that, that never happened, so to go ahead and get it done, I mean, to go ahead and leave it on the agenda, it's already on the agenda, we can take care of it, I mean, that's, that'd be less time with to worry about it, but once, once we get it taken care of, and I mean, we can move, move fast on the agenda, so I think right now we should leave both of these events, on both of the items on the agenda, because both of them need to be discussed publicly.
Who is presenting this, whose name do I put aside, Dr. Burr?
Well, if Wendy approached you, she must, there must be some policy issue that she's worked.
It was, it was, it was, it was because it was between Wendy and also.
Dave Grissom.
Right, Dave, Dave Grissom, they were supposed to bring some information before the board about both these issues, because first, first we told you to go ahead and solve it, apparently, it, that didn't happen, so now we need to go ahead and take time out in the meeting and go over everything we need to go, so we need to sign out, and we can go, and get taxes issued. Because we keep passing, just one person passing the ball here, we just need to go ahead and make a decision and be done with it.
And that's what, you, you, she told you that she sent us something, and I, I thought I remember reading something.
But right choices, right choices, they're not, they're not, when I went over there, they're not wanding, and they said, and they said it was something that was supposed to come before the board. So whatever that something is, we have the board, we need to go ahead and let it come before us. Because we just can't keep, we can't keep going back and forth carefully with this.
No, but I, so, I think we got the answer, but the answer may not have been communicated to right choices, that may be the problem.
Yes.
So that's what we need to.
I think, I think Susan was probably the process that was supposed to come over as well, and tell us, ah, they're, they're her process of, of the wanding.
So I think the time is in, so.
I know, I think we need to hear back from Wendy, 'cause I do remember some discussion, but honestly, the details.
Well, well, the, well, the agenda is already made up, and I think that we should leave these things on the agenda. And like I said, if we don't need to revisit them, once we're there, we, that will just move, move our, move our time out, move our time, that's all.
All right, let's flip to the second page of the Saturday agenda, so. Yeah, eight, eight-thirty, we get breakfast networking, I don't think we need another executive session. Call back to open sessions. I wonder what, do we need that there, call back?
Yeah, because she recessed. We recessed, you recessed on Friday.
All right, Tanya's budget update, two and a half hours. Now, the, the board signature authority, I thought was, was what the finance committee was recommending.
They motioned it to come to the work session. Their motion, what was, it was their recommendation for it to be discussed at the work session with their motion of increment.
So it just seems, I wouldn't expect Tanya to be giving that, so.
I mean, she gave it in the, she gave the presentation in the finance committee, so.
So they're wanting her to do the presentation to the full board, maybe?
Okay. And is that, does she, is an hour, that seems like a long time, but I don't know what she asked to present, so.
I can even cut that time down.
I don't know.
I can ask her.
Ask her.
Enjoy.
Enjoy, yeah, Chuck, enjoy.
Ask her, enjoy the Chinese speaker.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right.
Is the indication, information that she found, does that need to stay on, and I know Wendy said ARs can, don't have to be on there if you don't want to. These, these two things don't have to be.
No, no, that needs to stay on, invocation needs to stay on, I told her we need to discuss that, when she tried to discuss that. Hey, Joanne, how you doing? This is, this is William, I was calling to ask you, do you, I said, oh, we're in the , we're in the agenda setting right now, and we, and you had the tiny criteria for the board signature authority, do you think that that will take an hour, or do you think it will take, it'll be done in less time? Yes, ma'am.
I did not see you.
I know, I couldn't, yeah. I didn't realize it was you until you.
I was wondering about.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. O'Shea. Yes, ma'am. All right, bye-bye. She said, yes, all right, she said, it'll take, it'll take an hour. She said, it'll take an hour, so you can keep that.
All right.
It's fine. Uh, invocation, we can keep, we can keep that. Ms. Carter tried to give me some information, I told her that we need to have, that, that , that, William, her conversation, so therefore, that needs to stay there as well.
ARs, which ARs are these? I think it might be vaccination from what she said, but I don't know, do you know which ones? So do you think we should have that there? Which ones are, I mean, ask her.
I just think it's better.
Oh, ask her which one is.
Just have it listed.
Right, what it is, okay.
If she calls back, we'll catch her.
Yeah, on that part too. Okay. And so, John, we've allowed two hours for the ad hoc committee policy review, is that appropriate?
I don't think I'll need it.
Yeah, I don't either.
I'm against it, I'm just thinking fifteen minutes.
I've got Wendy's research here.
Yeah.
Which is gonna take up the bulk of tonight's meeting, so I don't really anticipate any much further than we've gotten so far.
Okay. Do you wanna give at least a, an update?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
How much time do you want for the update?
Lunch plug in an hour, and then everybody will love me if I take less.
Yep. Okay. And then the motions that you had voted from March nineteen?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's fine. I was, I was, I was gonna say, I asked you, we might just go ahead and plug those in at, right, from, from twelve, from the twelve, the twelve, the twelve, twelve to one, I believe you can just flip, flip, flip that in there and make it a.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you wanna do.
I'm saying that, though, on, 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 on these two motions, we can, well, that's fine, we can disagree that way, that's fine, yeah, yeah, both of the motions still stand.
Well, if you're gonna, so it looks like you need to better clarify what the second motion is.
You said at the board meeting that it wasn't what we thought, so you had a motion for selection of board counsel for routine matters, and you did, so you're.
Basically, 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 um. Uh, basically, like, like I said, I'm at a motion for, so for selection of board counsel for, for routine matters, need to check with full board. That, that's, that's basically what it needs to say.
Oh, so you want, so from the list, because you all have an approved list now.
Right.
So you're saying for our, to get, to access anybody from that full list, you're making a motion that the full board has to decide for routine matters?
Yeah.
And how are you gonna do that? Are you gonna check with the board?
We're gonna talk about that at that meeting, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna discuss that here. I don't think that's the main, main place to discuss.
And that's what's in your motion, so you might wanna change your motion.
Any other adjustments this, and?
Actually, since we had, since we had time, I would really like an update from, from Robert, I think with the, with the, with the new director, Mr. Black, I'd like to see where, where he's at on his analysis with the buses. We had heard that from him, and he's been here about a month now, we need to hear something about what's going with these buses. I think we need, we need to put something in there about, about the buses, and he gave us some, he gave us some type of an update.
When, is, is Mr. Black, did I, that, is he gonna be with the operations committee making that?
Yeah, yeah, he, he's, he's supposed to, but I, 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 originally, we put him on hand and all of a sudden, he got changed to the operations. I, I think, I think on Friday, that would, that would be, be good to have, have him come to that meeting on Friday and give us a couple of updates.
It could be Saturday, don't you? Don't you?
Saturday?
Well, that's fine, that's fine, I'd just see if he comes Saturday, but I mean, I was just looking, looking, looking at Saturday and seeing, um.
Usually, if you try to keep, usually you try to keep staff to come on Fridays.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, because they don't do their work on Saturdays if you're going to have staff come.
Well, if we, you know, the update on weapons search for right choices and the SCRO, I, did Wendy tell us that in executive session? Is that where we heard that?
No, actually, I was, I was gonna say, maybe, I was gonna say that leader, I guess, what, that, that.
Cause I, I remember hearing.
I hear, but.
Yeah, I can't remember, I, I remember hearing Wendy talk about that, but she booked up the.
Yeah, but after, after, after we talked about it, I went over there, and there was still a problem there. After she said this, whatever she said, 'cause the problem still was there with right choices. So it, it was not resolved.
Okay, so the question.
That's why, that's why I'm debating, I'm, I'm, I'm arguing the debate a bit, that, that this discussion, this discussion needs to come before the full board, because things are not being transparent, and so that we can get them ironed out, once, as, once we talk about it as a board, that everybody have a clear vision on what's going on, and then we can move forward from there.
So if we wanna add the transportation, the bus update, can we, uh, squeeze in?
Or maybe we can do from three, from three-thirty to four, and, and, and then from, from four to five, from four to, from four to three-thirty, we can do public comments. We can put it from three-thirty to four.
You know, I, I know it's customary not to ask staff to come in on a Saturday, but you don't do it very often, the man is new, I think if we put him in on Saturday, ask him to come, he'll come.
But I don't see nothing wrong with putting, with putting him on from three-thirty to four o'clock. I think three-thirty to four o'clock is not bad.
The only thing is, do you think, oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, John.
Since we cut down the amount of time of policy and transportation is a budget issue, perhaps we could fold Robert into Tanya's time? Instead of tucking him on at the tail end? I was.
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, you, oh, you're talking about it from the, from the eleven-thirty to twelve?
About a budget update, at eight-thirty?
From eight to eleven.
So why do you think that's shortened? So why do you think that's shortened? Why do you think that's shortened?
No, policy was shortened from two hours down to one, so now we got some time we made up. But what I'm thinking is, if we wanna have Robert come in and talk about transportation, it's an operational budget issue, so why not, why not have him give the update during Tanya's?
But that would be on Saturday, we're trying to get it coming on Friday.
Huh?
That would be on Saturday, but we were trying to get it coming on Friday.
But is Robert, or is?
It's, it's Mr. Black.
Mr. Black, yeah, it would be Mr. Black, right, right, yeah, yeah. I mean, but I just don't see, I just don't see nothing wrong with him coming, coming in on, on Friday from three-thirty to four.
How do you come up with two-thirty?
I said, it's fine.
Three-thirty.
From three-thirty to four o'clock.
And then the public comments, four to four-thirty?
Right, and then public comments from four to four-thirty.
My, yeah, the only, do you, I don't know, my only thought about that, William, is that, uh, let's look at the community pro, I mean, mentally, are people gonna be kind of drained by then? I guess it's not the budget, so it's not as taxing. You know what I'm saying? I mean, when you say, yeah.
What do you want him to update, so he'll know what to prepare? What, what information are you asking?
What, what, what has he been doing since he's been here? What, what has he, what has he found out this, this, this far? Because I know he's been doing, he's been doing, they're a lot, taking a lot of information and, you know, how is it going out there with him and the, him and the bus drivers? I mean, he's new, we need, we need to hear something from them that we are concerned in, you know, we are having buses, we are having, we're heading up a lot of buses, how is he tackling it, what is he measuring, I mean, you know, what, what is, what is he doing? Twiddling your thumb, I mean, what's really going on?
So I'm not so sure going, since we're now on Friday again, from two-thirty to three-thirty, do you think those would require an hour for the weapons and the SCRO? Seems like that's an awful lot of time.
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah, I think so, might can you cut, cut that in half?
Yeah.
To maybe, to maybe thirty minutes.
Yeah, because I know, yes.
That seems like.
I do feel like we've had, we've had, yeah, so.
Make that two-thirty to three, those two, and then three-thirty to four will be, three to, three to, three to three-thirty, right?
Right.
Will be transportation, and he's on Friday, which is preferable, yeah, and then the public comments are the same.
Yeah, William, just to be sure here, I'm gonna ask you, this is kind of briefing on your first ninety days or whatever, what's he know, what's he doing, what's he measuring, what are, what are his early thoughts?
What is his early thoughts, what information, how's he finding about, about buses?
I'd like to know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What improvements he, he has, would recommend, or it's already made.
Yeah, what hurdles, yeah, what are hurdles?
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask, why isn't that presentation by audit going to the operations committee first, to see if there's anything that comes out of the operations committee that went to the full board? That's why we have committees.
Right.
Uh, what, what's presentation?
On transportation.
Uh, because, that's, he's a, because he's just hired, and, and, and this, and this goes to public, the, the committee, that's a committee, committee for the board, he just comes to the public, the, the public knows what's going on, he's hired by the public, not, not a committee, the committee didn't hire him, that's why, all right? And, and, and that's what, that's what, that's what the community wants to know, I'm getting a large amount of calls about buses, so therefore, to let community know that we're working on it, and we want to hit it at the same time they do, all right? Everyone don't come to committee, keep to committee.
Easy, easy does it.
All right.
To my view, that is bypassing the idea of committees. The committee meetings are public, public can come, if they got transportation questions, they can come to an operations committee and answer those questions here, just like they do to the academic committee. The more that we bypass the committees, the less efficient they're gonna be.
Thanks for your attention, yeah, thank you.
With all due respect, Will, you are monopolizing what's on the agenda.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I said with all due respect.
I, I, I've asked for one thing to be on the agenda, that wasn't on the agenda. Y'all have tried to take out every, actually, I have tried to take out everything on the agenda, because y'all don't want these conversations publicly, and I'm gonna fight for more transparency. I feel that we're not being transparent enough, and I feel that we're not being, being upfront with the community. These are things that, you know, we, we have to have these tough, regular. These are things that, we don't, we, we have to have these tough, rigorous conversations with the, in front, in front of people, or, and amongst each other. We've been giving these, we've given these things time and time to people to get done, and every time you look, they're not, they don't know when they're done. Two or three people will discuss it, and, and, and it goes away, and, and, and we're done with it. But then, and then after a while, you hear about it, oh, yeah, this wasn't done. Okay, when you do things upfront, you're transparent, you're there for the community, everyone's know, everyone know what was said, then it's, it's, it's not, it's nothing else to be said about it. I mean, I, I, I just feel that I see it from time to time, there's some conversations that we don't want, that we don't wanna have with, with, with the community. We don't wanna have, with, 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 with the whole governing body. That's, that's just what, that's just what I feel. And the more conversations we have, the more governing body, that's the less problems that we have. I think those, 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 these, these backdoor conversations are, are what's causing the board division. So the more public conversations that we have together, I think that, that, that will internalize it where we go forward as a board. That's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, and, you know, my original thing here was, I thought it was going to the operations committee.
Right.
Um, I'll tell you what I do with the academic committee. We're having a thing tomorrow on K eight, a presentation. I called the people public that are interested in K eight, and I told them, this is what's happening. We're having a discussion at this meeting.
Right.
And then I also told them if they couldn't come, how to, I found out how they can access the audio. So I do kind of, I, I do think that the committee should vet these things and then bring them to the board, so...
And, and, and once again, that's also my day, and that's great, but guess what? That's better for the community that you serve. The community that I serve, they don't have that option, they have, those people have to go to work.
Well, this time, this, this one's on a Friday afternoon during work.
And, 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 and that is exactly right, and also, that, that this meeting here, people, the full, the full governing body board will, will, then will, will be able to see, and they will be able to ac- access it, and, and, and therefore, everyone from, from here to Egypt will be able to go back and watch that meeting, it is the same as any other. But in the day, these are conversations that we need to have as a full board, not as a committee. Because the same way, I'm sure I'm getting bus, I'm getting conversations about bus calls, I'm off and, off and south is getting. So we let people know that we are working on things, it's called transparency. And, and, and a committee, a committee is three people. When, when we have a full, a full, when we have, keep having all these questions with the full board, then we all can ask Mr. Black a question in regards to transparency. I mean, I mean, in regards to, to, uh, to, uh, transportation. I may be there, and you may be there, and, and you may, you may not think of something I may, I may think of. Or you may have a question that I don't have, I, I have a question, and I may say, oh, I need to see it that way, so now I have a different perspective, because I heard you ask him a question, and I heard what the answer he gave, he gave in return. But if it was just me, 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 you and John and Christina, then David, then, then, now David may have the same question we have, but he didn't say.
You know, it kinda sounds to me like this is more, it's a greater question about the committees, the committee functions, because I, I, you know, if we're gonna let our committees work like they're designed to, more than, we have to follow the process. You know, we don't take everything to the full board for that process, and we, we trust our committee people, and they're all public meetings. That's just my, my sense.
And, and, and I, and I do agree, but Captain, this is one of the largest problems right now. You, you, when you're talking about, you're talking about, uh, start times, you're talking about the transportation, about every school in the district. This is, this, this is, when you have huge problems, they're not really committee, committee problems. You have to evaluate the, the, the amount of, uh, the seriousness of every situation. In transportation, if we also all, all our bus drivers tomorrow, wha- 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 what would you do? Doctor Rodriguez, if, if tomorrow, uh, Mr. Black called you and say, none of the bus drivers called you, came to work, what would you do?
I'd say they're on strike.
Wha- 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 no, but you know they're on strike, the question is, what would you do beyond that? And, and, and that's, and that's, and that's my point. And, 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 and there's a lot of stuff going on in, in the, in the, in the bus sector. And once again, I think that the full board should be on those and understanding versus a committee. I think that it's a very serious issue, that we, that, underlying issue that we need to know as, as a board. That's why I'm, I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying they come to the committee, but as a board, what's, what's going on?
Okay, so I guess we have to get back to setting the agenda. So I guess my, my hope would be that the operations committee would say, this is an issue that's bigger than us, and we want the whole board to talk about it. But in this case, we have to decide now whether we're gonna put it on the work session agenda. So, John?
It seems to me that this is getting dangerously close to two things. One, to reinvent the cow. And number two, involvement of the board in operational issues. That's why we have the committees to deal with the operational issues, vet the issues, and bring them to the full board. That's how the board decided it was gonna work. And if there's an exception for transportation, before you know it, there'll be an exception for something else. Start times have been assigned by you to the operations committee. I think the operations committee ought to handle it.
Okay, and, and, and I think this is different from the start time. I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the bus, the bu, we need to know where our bus, the director of buses is doing in this district. We hadn't heard from him since he's been hired. Have you heard from him? Have you, have you reached out to him? Have you offered him support?
No.
Exactly, why not?
Cause I, why not? Because I don't involve myself in operational issues.
Wha- what, that, that, that's not operational issue, have you introduced yourself yet? Exactly, why not? You do everybody else? Exactly.
Okay, so if we're gonna keep this on the agenda, we modify how we, what do you want him to say? Go ahead, keep me sorry.
That's okay. So I do think it's a, you know, we, we've decided as a board that we're gonna work with the committee structure, and it seems like we're going down a different rail on the track if we start allowing each, each area of operations or whatever topic it is to appear on the agenda without first going through the respective committee. However, I do see how bus transportation affects everyone, and I get called by, I get called, I get emailed, oh, the bus didn't show up, I've got a call by parent, write the bus off. So I'd like to know, to the public, what do they do when the, when the, when the bus does not come to pick up their child? Let's have it more of general for the public. Let's do that. Let's not get into start times and, and, can it work for K eight? That's been assigned to the committee. So we just want, I want general information appropriate for the public, uh, that, to, um, for, for the, for the issues that would affect the public. And I think thirty minutes would be fine.
Yeah, but I think that's good.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, nice.
I needed to add one more thing.
Yeah.
Looking at Tanya's, on the budget update, Joseph Passment is also going to be coming and presenting with, so... Under, under the twenty nineteen twenty, he's the county, the, the new county council person.
Right, so is he gonna go fir, I think she wanted him to go first, too. So can you ask?
I will ask her. Oh, I'll ask her.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure she told me that she, he would go first, and then she would go. All right, we need to move on to the, to the next agenda, or may say.
So the leftover executive session items were employment matters, um, and I just, uh, in addition to the personnel ratification report.
Yeah.
Then you had the retirement transfers, the personnel, personnel performance reviews, and then the seat, uh, legal, and I, and I should have put the unredacted, that's supposed to be on there, too.
Yeah, the unredacted, uh...
Yes, so that's...
Attorney bills. Yeah. So these are the things that are left from, um, last Tuesday night?
Yes.
And plus the ones that would come up monthly, right?
Yes, the adult homeschool and the personnel ratification.
So...
So starting at...
I don't know, an hour and a half, it seems like a long time, but we seem to run over.
Five?
I don't know, do you have an opinion?
Well, you just came off a three-hour one, so you're kinda used to long executive sessions. Why don't you, why don't you leave it at four thirty right now, as we get closer?
We'll have a little break.
We can, we can cut it back, which means...
We also had review with the legal invoices.
Yeah, we just said, that's what I said, we just added that, it's not on here.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, uh, student performance, uh, what is Broadell River Elementary School doing, do we know yet?
I don't, she just gave me the name, she said it.
Also, Wendy was supposed to bring us a more in-depth of, uh, legal, um, you know, when she, you know, legal, uh, issues of, um, legal, uh, any, any legal, uh, premium litigation that we had out there. She was supposed to bring us...
Well, I think that's right here.
Which one was that?
And other matters related to the case claims that are covered by the attorney client privilege, because those wouldn't be discussed, things that would be discussed in public.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Yes.
Is that correct? Yeah. Points of celebration, um, all right, public comments, four hundred minutes. So we need to, so we need to add four thirteen minutes to that, right? And, cause that's gonna be real short, and you and I will, um, work on that tomorrow.
Okay. And will we be adding the minutes from the work session?
Yes. Oh, God, yeah, there's a lot. Four, uh, what do you think?
Four twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. So board action on any committee recommendation, so academic, will, your meeting?
Yeah, we're, I, I doubt that we're gonna have, we're not gonna have any action, I don't think, we're just still...
Okay, we'll just have your committee, committee report.
All right, so, um, John, um, question for you, so if you're gonna be presenting at the, excuse me, at the work session, are you gonna need to be also on the committee report?
Uh, no, I prefer to wait till the next meeting after that.
Okay, yeah, okay. And we'll, let's think of the other committees, anybody else gonna be, they won't be meeting before then?
They would lose the second, they would be meeting on the second week.
Okay, May. Okay, all right, so that would be the only one, all right.
Good job. Get to.
So, uh, Academy update, update on strategic, strategic plan and advance it. So this is strategic plan of what, the district?
This is the district, Bonnie is going to talk about the str- the strategic plan that the school sent out, and the new strategic plan for the district with the new school script in it, that they've been meeting, and she wants to update you all on where they are, what's going on. As you change, we, every five years, the strategic plan has to be updated and changed. And so she, she has a committee that's been meeting, they have a plan that was sent to the state department, and she wants to update where the school plans are and what their committee has been doing.
So that will be a Bonnie Almond?
Let me, let me, let me just ask a question. When she, when she, there's two things here, a strategic plan, and the other is advanced ed. Did she differentiate between those two?
She said the two, because the advanced ed plan also rolls into the strategic plan. Like, uh, if we look at our strategic plan, we have advanced ed, um, there are things that are in there, so... That was the general, she said she wanted to talk about what? The two, the two of, she just differentiated between the two? She wanted to talk about what was sent up to the state department and where they were.
I may be confused on this.
Okay.
But the advanced ed plan, as I understand it, is something the state requires.
Yes, that is true.
And there's some things you have to do, no matter what anybody says you gotta, gotta do.
Right.
But the strategic plan is really a board function.
Right, right.
And, and really, this is not, this would be an awkward time to get into strategic planning. You've got a new superintendent coming in ninety days, that needs to come up during his time with you, and you all look on it together.
That's what I would think, and I'm surprised that things would be sent up to the state without the board looking at it first.
Well, not the whole problem. Yearly, there is a strategic plan that each individual school sends up to the state, and the state has to, um, and that's what they have sent up, and that's what she wants to update you all on, because the state is changing some of their requirements.
So it's like, kinda like the format, the requirements of the, um, strategic plan versus the...
It's not the strategic governan, it's not the strategic governance plan that the board has. We're not talking about that, we're not talking about that.
What strategic plan are we talking about?
There is, every five years, school districts puts in a strategic plan where they get the community, so...
Yeah.
There's requirements from the state, and each individual, and I might be saying, I'm saying wrong. But each year, the school sends up their strategic plan that the state signs off on, in addition to the advanced ed plan. She wants to update you all what the state requirements are, what they have sent up to the state, and, and update you all on that. We're not talking about the board governan, we're not talking about the board governance strategic plan. That's not what we're talking about.
The words are the same, I think it's a different strategic plan.
Right, it's not the board governance strategic plan.
And who would have submitted it? Bonnie Almond, you, or Wendy, who submitted it?
No, they generally take, have my signature on it. But I haven't signed anything yet. And then she's had a committee working for two months on this thing. That's why I'm, I, I know about the advanced ed plan and what's required. And you're probably right, there's some kind of a, same word, strategic plan, but it's not the board's big plan.
It's not the board governance, too.
I don't think so.
It's not the board's governance strategic plan. That's not what we're talking about.
Go ahead.
On the strategic plan for just a minute, back in kind of October or so, I thought I would sort of take that on. It, it looked like it was in, in zero status. I, I put some hours into it and decided, there's only two, three things you can do in a year, and that's not something I'm gonna take on. It's just too big a project. But if you're coming here for five, six, seven, eight years, nine years, that's something you need to get worked on with your board and the community in that first fall, that first year, to get people to rally around where you're trying to go. That's the big strategic plan, and that really is a, a, uh, next superintendent project.
And, and Dr. Rodriguez talked about that.
Yeah, both, actually, both candidates mentioned that that needed to be updated. They both said that.
Cause it gets updated every...
Let me talk to Bonnie in the morning and find out what she, what, what her strategic plan means.
So then we have fiscal responsibility and other budget update.
Tanya, this, she meets with county council on that Monday, prior to the day after. So she's gonna be bringing you updates from that county council meeting.
Perfect.
Um, that prior Monday.
Okay. All right, under other matters, the community project review committee update. And we anticipate two more members presenting, or what?
No, we're, we're, we're past the committee.
Okay.
The, on Friday, the two or three hours that I'm gonna work, it's, it's all to administration now. And what we, what we get done and don't get done, we're gonna push it over to this next meeting. You're gonna have questions you want follow up on, you're gonna want me to look into things on that Friday morning, and this, we'll come back at this time, and probably to the next meeting as well.
So it should be, I think, labeled something else, because committee members aren't gonna be there.
You're right.
So this would be, should I put your name on there?
Please.
Yeah, okay.
No, on, I'm gonna be the person you see on the session.
So...
Currently, we don't have the board business.
Yeah, we, so the one request that came through, and I believe it came to all of us, was Rachel's request for the results section on evaluating, um, the superintendent, and it kind of came out of your, uh, policy discussion. So we need to, I think, have that somewhere.
So can I go up under this goal five supervision evaluation of the superintendent? Where's this goal number five?
I don't think we'll be taking action on it.
Right, so it won't be in that, right, so that's why it's not under board action, it's right up there on the guide. So you would just be sitting there talking about it and establishing whatever it is that you want to establish.
Also, uh, while we're talking about, about boards, um, um, when will we, at what point, when, when will we start, uh, what we call special, uh, special, uh, executive session to start negotiating of, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, uh, his contract?
We discussed that when you were out of the room on the April twenty-sixth work session. The attorney who's, who, uh, may represent us is coming to that executive session. It's only gonna be devoted to that executive session, if we're allowing either thirty to forty, to forty-five minutes. That will be to meet the attorney and, uh, really decide whether we're gonna hire this person or not. And then board input can be, uh, gave in executive session. I'm sure the person has, this person has experience with, uh, uh, negotiating a superintendent's contract, and will probably give us some parameters to start with, instead of, you know, making the, you know, reinventing the wheel. I think they'll start with some, and we can discuss that.
So, but, so by this meeting here, I think we should be able to finalize the contract, which, 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 I think so by, by May fourth. Which, which, I think so by May fourth, I think we should be able to finalize the contract by then. If everything, if everything works well, I think we should be able to have on this board meeting here, I think we should be able to make, I think we should be able to make agreements, sign the contract. So that should be somewhere within this board meeting.
So let's look at a calendar here.
So you're giving, so that would be basically ten days to come up to the contract, I think, because it's May seventh.
Yeah, and that's just what I was looking at. So if we hire an attorney on April twenty-six, then that attorney has one, two, three, four, five, six business days to do a contract. That, I think it usually takes longer than that. Because there's usually give and take and there's bargaining in there. Yeah.
And there's going to be communication between our attorney and...
I'll try to get an attorney.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So I would say that that could be decided in actual period.
One month.
Yeah.
One month.
Three weeks.
Now, there is a risk in that one month. There is a risk.
What was that?
And that is, he can say, this is taking a lot longer than I thought. And Bill Adams says, well, you don't have to wait for them, I got a job for you in Cleveland. You don't want to, you don't want to make this too long. You have a window here.
And that's what, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to go ahead and secure.
Yeah.
At the risk of even calling a special call meeting to approve the contract.
Yes.
You don't want to let this sit too long.
It's unfortunate, I sent a, I sent a, a update to the board and copied Wendy's. And she's the attorney and that's what I'm saying. You're not telling me anything I don't know.
Yeah, it's, you know, a shame that we couldn't start right now. But Tina couldn't hire the attorney right now without having to take this attorney to the board. Because I think these days right now are pretty critical.
I agree.
Well, maybe, well, well, well...
I said what I wanted to do in the email.
Will he just keep the attorney be there on a Thursday?
No, Friday.
Friday?
Nothing's going to happen out there.
So, we're kind of stuck.
Well, you said you didn't find out what else, I mean.
Can you not act as the chair on...
No, sir. No, sir, no, sir. Nope, can't.
And I think the reason that she can't is because the attorney that we are to, is that none of the attorneys on the approved list have the experience that we need.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, so... So maybe if we, you know, executive session, if it works out well and maybe that attorney can start that Friday at least to reach out, that would be...
I think, I think you need to make another call to Dr. Rodriguez tomorrow or the next day to show the board's interest, your interest. You've got to fish online here. And they, he doesn't, he's down in Florida, he doesn't know what we're doing. He's thinking all kinds of things. And I think you, I think you've got to play Fisher person here.
I appreciate your input. But I have to tell you, we're off topic and I've already reached out to him.
All right. Let's see, Adams is holding this. Search is still going on. Search isn't over until we sign a contract. So he should be, he should be running interface between us, excuse me, that's the way it's usually done. Best practice is the consultant handles the interface between the incoming board and the superintendent designated to be. All right. And that... That's correct. Right. So that would clear up a lot of, a lot of it. And I hope, I hope that we don't have two simultaneous goals of doing it quick and doing it right. I hope that doing it right is the primary goal and then doing it in the shortest amount of time, get it right. But I've never seen a search where the board had to deal with the candidate designated all until the contract was signed.
Okay, let's move forward. I was looking for, I found the...
Rachel's, yeah, request.
Request, and it says, please allow this to serve as a request for the additional discussion relating to setting updating of the results pursuant to the strategic plan and as referenced in our policy manual. So...
That's the big strategic plan, I think.
Yes, I think it is, yes.
So that I think would go under, I'm, at least the best place for that would be under goal number five because it's going to be for the future.
Will you send me up to me?
Yes.
Or we're going to you right now? And maybe, you know what I think would be helpful? Hey, Mel.
Come on in.
Dr. Berg, what I think would be helpful is either I think you or Wendy are reaching out to other comparable districts. What, how do they do that? Because that seems to be an issue here. And it's something also that is going to be needed to be included in the contract. All right, any further?
So currently, we don't have any board business section. Well, I mean, we might have something coming out of the work session.
Right, we can... So that's, yeah, I think you're right. And, because these other things are more informational.
When?
Assuming that's would be the action, if we know that, I guess.
Going back to the work session. When are you all expecting the staff will not see, will see this again, the agenda again tomorrow that we have changed? So what is your expectation of wanting information into board access?
They see it tomorrow, I guess.
I mean, I sent it out when we did the first draft.
Yeah.
And so we've got things changed. I'll send that tomorrow, waiting, do I wait on the update on weapons and SRO? Is that a stay or am I still waiting for Wendy to respond to that?
I think it's a stay.
Okay, so I'll send this out tomorrow. When is your expectation of having materials?
Well, I would hope tomorrow, tomorrow evening.
Yeah, okay.
That would be my expectation.
Dr. Berg can help with that.
Yeah.
How much new stuff is on here compared to the one they saw a week ago?
Nothing, transportation, it looks like is the only one thing that you have added on to here.
But we discussed the transportation kind of update in the operations committee.
Yeah, so I don't think he was looking for, but he wasn't looking to prepare and with them being on spring break last week, so he didn't have an expectation of having to prepare and have something to do like last month tomorrow. Since we're just putting it on today.
I believe he said that he did have something done on, but he didn't have it all when he done. So, I believe he can basically take, in the wrong, we're asking for him to give a full detail PowerPoint presentation versus giving us the basic information like you just said.
Before you do when the bus driver comes to drive your child.
Right, so if you can't come up to the top of it.
Because I think the public needs to know that. They're emailing or calling.
So that shouldn't take all week to come over.
So I'm here, the wrong date is for the next four days?
Thank you.
It's not the sixteenth?
No, it should be the twenty-first. The sixteenth is a Thursday.
Okay.
So, but it's not going to be at Bluffton Library, right?
Well, I don't know, Scott said they were working on it, so if it's not ready, then...
While we say tentatively. Tentatively scheduled for Bluffton Library. So then, please check our schedule or something like that, you know, so people don't come with the wrong information. Or check, check calendar on befordschools.net or whatever. I would just put some disclaimer there about location.
Okay, and then we have to set our next agenda setting meeting.
Correct. So, let's see.
Like, Monday, the thirteenth is the Monday before the twenty-first.
The school board county council budget meeting is on Monday, the thirteenth.
Okay, at what time?
I don't know, six o'clock.
Sometimes they might have their finance committee meeting earlier. I don't know if they have a finance scheduled.
For some reason, I have it loaded in my calendar as five o'clock, but I couldn't swear on that. I think it'd be wrong.
They carry on, okay. So how about, sometimes we do the Thursday, what about Thursday, May ninth?
We have a budget form.
We have a budget every night.
No, you have the budget form and there's also a finance committee meeting and they're to decide where they're going to change that.
Yeah, I can't make it on the ninth, I'm waiting.
Tuesday, the fourteenth. Tuesday, May fourteenth.
Tuesday, May fourteenth. That is my anniversary, but I'm happy. My forty, how many years I've been married? Okay, that works for me.
Why can't we just go earlier, earlier than that, on that Thursday, Monday? On the white skin, we go early.
What time would it be? It depends on what time that other meeting is.
It's at six.
I think it, we would have to find out if there's a finance committee meeting first.
And this would be a finance board of education meeting?
No, the county council, where they can talk about our budget. So usually, the chair and the liaison, the finance, is only be at the finance committee.
Okay.
But that's...
So you can find that out for tomorrow?
Yes.
If we had, if, let's assume, can I assume it starts at six rather than five?
Yes.
So we, if we had the meeting in the county chambers, we find a room, we could go at one thirty.
Yeah, four-thirty is on the table.
Yeah.
And that way, you're in place in the building and...
Four-thirty.
There's a conference room on the second floor. That's for the...
And William doesn't have to...
That's not to drive, no.
Give him a break.
And in the meantime, we'll find out if it is at six or at five.
Yeah. And I don't mind the fourteen.
So we're deciding the fourteen?
No, the thirteen.
The thirteen. At four-thirty if, if the county council...
Okay, so it's that county council chambers agenda, okay.
And if everything is the same from the first printing of this agenda, tomorrow, I'm going to be in court all day, so I won't even be in the building till three or four in the afternoon. You have to go back to everybody, including Mr. Black. But I will call Robert Audi tonight on the way home and alert him to these, actually, if you give those questions to Mr. Audi or Mr. Black. That's the only one that might have made tomorrow at four o'clock, depending on... But not raise hard questions.
No.
You say that's a...
Process problem.
Well, I'm thinking, I was thinking, you may have to prepare something and get him to it. That stuff, yeah.
I'm saying, he can't, he needs to be fired. And he can't, I'm serious, if he tells he needs to be fired, that's common sense, though. We've got to get competent people working.
Don't jump in that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that my opinion, if he can't do that, then he needs to be fired.
Five twenty-five, attorney.
He can do that.